Takes a second. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I like to order the regular meeting of the Public Utilities Commission for Thursday, July 11, 2024. It is now 3:30 PM. I'd like to begin with the pledge allegiance votes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh. You appeared. I just tried to call you back. I was multitasking. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to begin, is there any public input? There's nobody online, right? Okay. Correspondents? Kelsey, is there any, any correspondence? Okay. I've just decided. Convenient. One second. It's out to lunch. I move that we approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of June 13, 2024 in a second. Looks like the one person who's absent was Selecton Turzian. Any discussion on the minutes? See, now I'll try your mind, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Get that. Selecton Turzian is an abstention. There we go. Hey. Financials, financial report.
All right, so as of right now, the June 30 numbers are the water department looks like it's in a surplus position of $1.6 million. The majority of that surplus, if you look at the on the revenue sheet, you've gotten $6.4 million in state reimbursement for the grant piece and loan. Versus we paid 4.8 this year. You look at that difference and that's like the 1.5. So without that piece of it, which is mostly the Bergstrom well, or pretty much all the Bergstrom.
Yeah.
Um. Right now, it'd be right around break even. On the sewer department, it is right at break even. Um. The, we haven't paid Danbury, which would put us in a deficit position. But if you remember that we talked a lot about sewer, there's two factors. How much did we bill for the year and how much did we collect? And you look at the collections. Sewers collected $3.9 million, so when we pay Danbury, we're going to be a little bit in the red versus collected versus what we spent. Um. Sewers traditionally in a surplus position. I'm not really worried about this here that it did a little bit below. Um. So and some of that's probably based on catching up on our estimated bills and some other stuff. I know water usage at the hole is down because we had a wet year. Um. So, but it looks great now, but as you'll see in the financials, when there's a $950,000 bill from Danbury, that would put us in huge deficit, but cash wise, it's a really good. Um, and that's really what we drive that on based on the source estimate. You know, so, but the disc cover sheet is just based on what we fill out, what we collect on the second. Way more than what we fill out. Um. I looked through it, I didn't see anything agreed to that stood out. Tom looks at it, he didn't really see anything. Um. The only thing that stands out, and we talked a lot about a lot is MIUs. You know, that's really the line that's out of whack and we know exactly why. All I got.
Might be worth adding that I did speak to the tax collector and trying to get a kind of a handle on what the net changes were with respect to when we did the MIU changes. Who paid more, who paid less?
Yeah.
Trying to see, you know, with those estimated payments, like how it affected our customers.
Yeah.
So she's going to try to get that information together for us, so we would know.
It affected me to 2,200 on one house.
Yeah. Well, there were some places, and to your point, that's, we're a long time. We were doing estimated, so.
2,200 for one water bill. I mean. But I'm a select when I paid the bill, I didn't say anything, but it's not right for the town to let it go that long and expect people to catch up on something that's sitting on the outside of a house that could have been replaced in 15 minutes. So that's my soapbox.
Um. To that point, Brian, I think it's, I know they're going to be way more on top of the MIU list now that we caught up for the most part. But I think if we get the decision, we'll have to do it again and have the project and get caught up. You know, it's a lot of them fail at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I think, I think we recognize as a as a commission that this is something that is a priority. We got it fixed, let's not get behind. I mean, I think we see what the impact is to our customer. Either good or bad.
Think about what that does to sellers living and paid to check their paychecks. Say it was my tenant's responsibility to pay that 2,200, and I had a lease, that would do the job.
Yeah.
They could be looking at eviction, they could be looking at a lien on their property if they own the house. I mean, to let something go that long is so.
I will say this, I did have a conversation with tax collector. They've been working very hard with some of the folks who got in a weird spot. You know, they're not just paying it all at once, they're trying to work with people. I think once we know those numbers, maybe we can look at it as a board and see if something we want to do.
I think the good news too going forward, since we caught up on the backlog, when we read meters again in July and we see that list, we can stay after that list. Most of that list should be recent. You know, you know, failures of MIUs as opposed to when we had a large backlog, some of them went back quite a bit.
How long did it take Tom's guys to get caught up? How long, how quickly did they do that?
Tommy Gaines' guys?
Yes.
Um. Which probably got a month and a half.
Yes.
And they probably knocked off about 800.
They did 800 in a month and a half with two guys?
Yeah. Yeah, two crews, yeah, two crews, yeah.
Yeah. So noted, that's something we will work on. So whatever we do right now. When do the bills come in July?
Well, they'll get read in July and they'll be due September 1st. They'll probably go out the very end of July or like sometime in August.
They generally come out like the first weekend in August.
Yeah.
Generally, you have a month and a half, like over a month to pay.
So actually, you would get an accurate reading now what's going on. Has we changed all the readers and stuff?
Yeah, when we get the July readings in a couple of weeks, we'll have our new list. And that list now, since we've been kind of paring it down, should definitely be, you know, manageable. And then we'll just stay after appointments and we'll get them done as they come up.
But should we flag any large bills and know in advance that these may be a problem?
Well, I think like Dan said, I think Paul is going to try to put together like a report to flag them before the bills go out.
Okay, so we're not waiting for the customer to complain.
Correct, we can, we can, you know, proactively look at them.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Um, next up, I move that we approve the invoices for the regular meeting of July 11, 2024 in the amount of $361,246.78. Any, uh, anything that I would say closer to this is Bergstrom and our attorney. Anything to add there?
I'll notice two right peers for Bergstrom. I think the one that's from May, I didn't get it till, you know, right before the meeting, so I didn't get it included on last month's meeting. So that's why you're seeing two for the same project.
Okay.
You not have the Danbury bill?
No, no, I don't actually.
That's the price that's at.
Yeah, we'll add that one for next.
For taking that to regular meetings, I get that.
I said that we have a bill for Danbury?
Danbury finally sent us the bill.
Oh, they did send us the bill.
I don't have it with me.
Okay, all right, so we'll do it then.
Yeah, I'd rather look at it a little more closely.
Oh, yeah, there was some stuff that was still estimated on it.
Yeah, I want to get a better handle on it and I just didn't get through it. Last couple.
I can take it off my list and now we know one day where it's going to pay or ask us when we pay. All right. Any further discussion on the invoices? See, now I'll try your minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tensions? Motion carries now. New business. Now, before we begin, do we have an addition to the agenda at some point?
Uh, yes. Um. I had, I can just say it out loud and then take it from there. I had consideration of acceptance of sewer and water mains and related easement at 42 Plum Tree Road.
Okay. So, um, I move that we add to the agenda consideration of acceptance of sewer main and related easement at 42 Plum Trees Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Votes, motion carries. By the way, that's under old business. We'll handle that. Because I think we've already done it once, we've talked about it, right? And then we tabled it?
Not, not.
Okay, the last one, so this is.
It's new for PUC.
Perfect. Then we'll do this at the, uh, at the beginning of new business.
And, uh, vulnerable changes to the agenda. The old business consideration of acceptance of sewer and water related easement and property designer is, is off. It's, you're not, I'm not writing this for you.
So when I get there, we'll table that. Um, okay, so how about, uh, let's hear from 42 Plum Trees Road. We have the map somewhere. Consideration acceptance of sewer main and related easement, the easement?
Um. I have the easement map, I took a look at it, I was, I was good with it. They covered our sewer and the water and, um, I subsequently, we got the water main, pressure test, disinfection, uh, the manhole tests, the sewer main, and I got a CCTV and everything, everything checked out well.
Okay.
So the map that was approved by the board select that, um, and the easement subject to approval on 8-24 approval and the PUC approval. And they don't give their approval until all the equipment was tested and checked and inspected and approved. So that piece has happened.
This is good. Okay, so. So, um, so I make a motion that we recommend approval of the easement to 42 Plum Trees Road. So, any further discussion?
And if you would just add subject to return approval of the content of the actual sewer agreement?
And that's what that has to be done with the final approval wherever. But we're just recommending our, we're recommending public utilities.
Okay, you're fine.
Right, you're fine. Um, okay, without, try your minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next up, request to discuss expanding the sewer service area. So. So who'd like, who'd like to begin?
I'll be the highest. Again, for the record, Neil Marcus, and I'm here on behalf of Tim Draper seated by right. We, uh, are asking if you give consideration to expanding the sewer service area so that the property that we're currently working on for development at nine Cutman Park Road could conceivably hook into the sewer system. So recently, very recently, at the July 9 meeting of the PZ Commission, we were denied an application for a formal housing project of small. Get, uh, just how many units we ended up with? Six, six units essentially, uh, where there's an old somewhat collapsed house, uh, tore down. Um. And the reason, one of the reasons that they turned this down is I'm quoting now from the decision. The health director has testified that surrounding properties below the site have marginal soils for subsurface sewage disposal system and have wet lots. And of course, she is concerned that even though the soil tests on the subject property seem to meet the state standards, uh, that they don't, she's worried that they're not the best for septic. So her part of her further comments was that, uh, there are a number, I'll try to quote it here too. Uh, the, uh, page five of the decision, mission. Again, quoting, the town's health director testified that other properties in this area have experienced septic problems or failures. So she's telling the commission that our project at nine, even though it's only six units and even though, uh, we haven't designed the septic systems yet, we've really given her the person deepest feasibility. She doesn't, she basically encouraged the commission to turn down the project, but she doesn't want the septic systems. So, and the reason is, they say not necessarily focused on nine, but on the surrounding area. Now, from my knowledge, and I don't have the history, but if I look at the houses in the sewer area that we're talking about, they're not new. I mean, these houses are 60 years old.
Or whether.
Yeah.
Tim Draper for the record.
They're old houses. So the septic systems that were there in all probability were built under the older codes, which were much more lax. And some of them may even predate the current codes completely, and they could be, well, I know what says. Uh, so here's the opportunity that we see, and that's the reason we're here. We now have to appeal this decision, which we have 15 days for publication, so essentially most of the next few days, we have tools. Um, so we're going to take an appeal and town's going to appear and we're supposed to spend a lot of money on the appeal. And we're going to appeal on the issue of whether this finding about septic suitability was correct. There's a second issue about inland wetlands, which are easily addressed. But the septic system issue is the only thing that could rise to public health safety. If this court finds that there's issues with septic, then they can determine that it's called health or safety problem. But of course, to do that, the court has to review the testing results that we submitted done by our civil engineer and the comments from the health department about not essentially rejecting those findings. She agrees to what was observed, but she doesn't think that we tested enough. But of course, the health code doesn't require us to, she wants to go above and beyond. And the commission seemed to think that that was reasonable. There is language in the health code, state health code, that says, for the proper reasons, you can ask for additional testing. So the reality of the question is, those reasons exist or don't? All of this prelude, which has nothing to do with your, uh, discretion or your decision making. All of this is to say, when Tim came to me and said, I'm willing to spend the money to expand the sewer to service the site and to benefit all these other properties who could hook in when their septic's fail. I actually thought that that was a terrific idea. And I said, why don't you see if you can get on the agenda for the PUC? And if there's any interest in this, that could avoid the work that I have to do out in the field, which I'd be just as happy to do. I'd rather spend his money. It sounds, I'd rather spend your money on sewers than on me, pardon me to say. But, uh, the, uh, but in reality, I would. And the same thing with town. I mean, if you've got to spend any money, uh, again, I love Chuck and he ends up with a file. You can pay him whatever, whatever you want, he's worth it. Uh, but I think the town's money is better spent if you need to cooperate or in expanding this, whatever the joint venture would be. Uh, that's money better spent. Tim, can you describe real quickly how this will work? What, what's your concept is?
Yeah, so there's different ways of doing sewer systems, right? Obviously, gravity is the most constant. Working on a job right now in Westport, right on 136, where everything's a low pressure force site. And that's, that would be the route I would go. Run it right up to 302 off of ours, it's less than 500 feet from us to get to 302 to the intersection there. I don't know where it's at exactly, but it's somewhere up there. Where it could be run across the street up to Midway Drive. Where apparently, I just found out, I'm not sure, I'm not 100% sure. On the east side, which we're on the east side of 58, there's all septic. On the west side of 58, which is the uphill side, which backs up to midway, those houses, some of them, oh, how many? But I know there's one under construction right now, they're pumping up to Midway Drive. That's all I know. So I don't know if that's in the sewer district or not. I was, somebody told me that they think it is. But I'm not 100% sure, maybe Mr. Villa could help say yes or no, tell you. Um, but I'm willing to foot the bill to send it up. You know, the director of health in town, you know, basically is, I, I, I disagree with her wholeheartedly, you know, so, uh, you know, everybody has their own experts. Um. And, uh, we came up with a great plan, you think it works, we meet the state code for a septic system. So we have to, again, this is, this, this would alleviate everything. And especially since I've been part of most of the bill. And according to the director of health, there's already been failures out there or imminent failures. There's, I don't know, however, it's written, you know, there's marginal soils and wet soils and whatever. And we don't have wet soils. I don't care what anybody says, it's not wet.
No.
Okay? And so this would basically jump, get in front of it. You know, and it would help anybody else's septic that did fail. They could tie right into it, off you go.
So if you run at your expense the main, the guy across the street or down the street, when his septic system fails, tell you how, correct. Rather than spending the money on a new septic system, you can get one in there, could really put in a pumping chamber in a lateral to that main and join off the system.
Correct.
The expense there would be much less than septic.
I put in probably 30 septic systems in my life, I'm a, I used to septic install about a state of Connecticut. And now, because you can't find select fill material cost, um, I would say the average septic system is 30,000. I just did one, I can't, I think that was almost 70,000 dollars. So. And if the soils aren't suitable, as our director of health has said, okay, that therein lies the problem. It's the cost of select fill to do septic system. So you're looking at big expenses. The pressure systems, I'm not all that super familiar with them. I need to sell Penn to do one onto this property that we're doing. They're tall, maybe three feet wide, about six, eight feet tall. They go in the ground and basically it's a grinder, so everything goes out. And matter of fact, it's an inch of water pipe. We're talking a pipe this big, so it's just a slurry that goes out and everybody just slides it along. And it's low pressure. That was what we would be, uh, that's what we would be interested in putting.
You know, while we're talking, if you know the expense of maintaining this system once it's developed, town, is this an expensive system?
No. Not at all, it's a, it's a forced main. It only has to be below, below frost protection, 42 inches.
So that's our concept. And of course, as usual, it's like a decision, Sepp, if you're in favor of that. As always.
It must really know government.
I thought it was like minutes.
It's a decision in five minutes.
Well, but here's the deal, if, if I have an indication that this is something that the PUC was interested in, then rather than taking an appeal, I can go back and amend our current application. And on the basis that we have a letter for the PUC saying they're interested. Now, ultimately, if you're interested, then you decide a month from now that you're not so interested, then we go back and then we can always take our appeal. Essentially, a letter of interest would extend the time for you to take your appeal. You have 15 days, but you can file an amended application in that 15 days. The only amendment is, what are we going to do about the septic system? And one is to say, we've met with the PUC and they haven't, you know, fully committed, but we have a letter of intent or a letter of interest, and that would be helpful. Uh, it's somewhat serious, and I said, I'm here to get you to act immediately. I do know that if you gave us that letter, and we have a caveat in there, that there's a lot of stuff that you've got to look at uh, to make a final decision. But that's our opportunity, when I told Tim, I said, if you're going to do this, you know, see if you can get on the next meeting, which is, you know, two days after the decision.
Obviously, this is an opportunity for me to move forward with my project, correct? But it's also an opportunity for the town to get something on my dime for other homeowners. The director of health, you got to remember this, I didn't say this. The town director of health is saying right into, this has been annulled, this is what's getting filed at the court, that there's systems failing, imminent system's going to fail, poor soils, all these things. We can, you can get this at the head on my dime, basically. You know, if, if it works out to be the right, right price.
So you've heard two amazing things today. Me saying I'd rather have spent the money on you to me, and Tim saying you can get something on this guy.
That I want to actually give more money to the town.
You'll never hear.
Yeah, we know Tim to be generous, we don't worry.
No. I'm generous enough.
So that's it, I mean, you know, if you have any questions, I mean, it's, it's somewhat simple and again, uh, it, we don't expect the town to have to spend any money or do much other than to oversee it.
Oversee it.
Well, I mean, from the, from the town's perspective, I'll just kind of open up. I know that it's a, it's a process. If we were to try to extend the sewer district, it's a process. Like we have some studying, we have to look at, um, our allotments, I mean, there's a lot to it. So we made it a little, we made a beat to have that discussion, because I don't think we're prepared to do that today. But I would open up if the commission members have any questions. And this is probably the time to ask.
How many houses potentially from where your house is to the end of, what is that, 302?
302 and 50.
Are there that could benefit from that?
On my side, I think there's four. There's three, three before me or four before me at my house. It's less, it's about 400 feet.
And do you have city water?
Yes.
So you already have city water?
The water, the water line was put in 10 years ago, maybe, I'm going to say, eight years ago.
Yeah, 16 or 17?
It goes fast.
In time. Are you proposing to put laterals in along the way or?
Yeah.
So you would put a lateral in for each house that it could service?
Yeah, you're just going to put a Y with a valve for, because you kind of go.
It's something, if somebody's system fails, all it is, it's just like a lateral up in Stoney Hill. You know, except that's grabbing. Hell, if the town was all for it, they could put a pump chamber down at the bottom and pump everybody up there, but hook into that.
And what happens if someone wants to hook on? Is there an assessment where since he paid for it, like how would that work? That, you know, we normally, when you extend the sewers, everyone's assessed if they decide they want to. You know, how would that?
What they're reading.
How would that work?
I, I don't know, I haven't experienced it. I know Melanie would not. The last big extension was all up in Stony Hill. And I know that was probably a multi-month, perhaps longer process to figure out who's in, where the lines are going to be, which systems are failing. Um, it was a process.
We would have to have some letter of agreement where he's gifting it to the town and we're not going to be assessed anything and people aren't assessed if they hook onto it because it's a gift from the developer.
All right, look, if I can make a question. I'm not quite sure I've done this in Bethel, I obviously have before, but in Danbury, uh, you can do a private extension of utilities, water or sewer at your cost, and there's a provision there that properties hook in over a period of years. Sometimes it's 10 years, sometimes it's 20 years. There's a pro rata reimbursement back to the original developer who did it. They have an ordinance that allows that. And I've used it rarely over the years.
We don't have that.
I don't think you have kind of.
We, we have that policy on the water side. I did write up a policy that got approved in 2019 for that exact thing. Developer pays the nut and if then anyone connects within, I think, a 10-year period, the per foot cost would be collected by the town and then reimbursed by to the developer.
So that really answers your question on that thought.
Well, actually, what it would be was we would just have the letter of agreement that there's no reimbursement because we don't want it.
That's, that would be the case now.
Correct.
We have a board and I'm saying that you have to, not Melanie, you want to talk.
I, I think there's more information here that the commission needs. Um, there is no, to my knowledge, any policy procedure ordinance for, for a private party who has a failed septic to pay and become part of the sewer district. And if you do that in this case, you'd better be prepared to do it for other developers who might have a property that they decide to, um, develop the way that Mr. Draper has. Um, and then you'd have to, you know, give everybody that opportunity. I don't see this being a one-off, right? And you're setting the repressive here, I don't know that you've talked about that. And I don't know that you've read the decision that they're referring to. So I, I'm just saying, um, I, I just think you just have to think about.
Right, but what's different here is I, all I was trying to say is, when we put a sewer line in, like in Stony Hill, everyone's assessed whether you hooked into it or not.
Yes.
You're assessed, I mean, you're paying the builder.
That's true.
In this case, the developer's paying the bill. My question was, is how do you handle someone who says, I want to hook into that? So all I'm trying to say is is this going to be where they don't owe anyone any money except the company that hooks it in or? You know, because I just, it's a question that we need to have answered before. You know, we really.
I, I think one of the questions Melanie has to look into, yes, all these people paid for the sewer originally, now we're allowing other people to pay for it. And is, are they due some kind of assessment for hooking into the sewer?
Well, I think that, again, I don't think that would be very fair, you know, if. My neighbor decided to extend the sewers on their dime. And the town has accepted it as part of their sewer district, and I want to hook onto it, I don't think I should be charged because. You know, the town isn't out any money. Our job certainly isn't, and, you know, I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Draper. The town's not responsible to collect money from Mr. Draper.
So we're not asking.
I'm not saying you are, but what I'm saying is, you know, that, that, that's what I'm trying to say, Richie, that I don't have a problem necessarily. If we allow him to extend the sewer district and people have a problem and they look into it, well, that's a benefit for them. What I'm saying is, is the town shouldn't be collecting money on anyone's behalf, but the town's for money that we've put out.
Well, I think there was one, one person up in Stony Hill that we did look at that, and I think there was a fee for them to hook into the sewer.
Put the sewer in though.
Oh, it never got done.
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, who, who put the sewer in?
The sewer was already installed.
By the town.
By the town, and this gentleman was outside the district and wanted to hook into it.
Right, but the town is the one who installed it, so we most certainly would have the right to say, we want you to pay us to reimburse what everyone else had to pay for.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
If he's doing it for free.
Yeah.
And the town has no money into it.
No, the, the.
We, we have no right to bill anyone anything.
The homeowner was hooking it up himself. He, he was picking up the price though.
No, no, I get it, but he's installing it into our sewer, right?
Right.
That's my point.
Right.
We paid for that sewer to be put in there.
And the reason. Well, the homeowners in the district paid to hook it. I get it, but the town, town did the job, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we, we did.
Can I ask a question? I thought Rich was going, and maybe you are, Rich. So the average assessment in Stony Hill, the Houston Stony Hill is at twenty thousand dollars per house. So those people bore the cost of running all that, right? So then if somebody that didn't have that twenty thousand dollar assessment, somebody else paid to extend it. And now they can connect for a thousand dollars or five grand, whatever it costs to connect into it. Is that necessarily fair to the people that paid twenty to build all the infrastructure to get that far? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm just, I was trying to read through what Rich was saying.
Okay, I guess it would depend on the age. I mean, if the system's been in place for thirty years, it's no different in a lot of areas. You know, if your neighbors ran power up their driveway, like I have property in Vermont, after seven years. You could hook onto that property through the wires for nothing. If you do it within a certain amount of time, then you have to pay your neighbor. You know, I think it would depend on the length of the time the sewers have been on.
Of the area of the person.
How much time left for you?
Zero.
Yeah, for downstream people, yeah, you put the line in, it was like, if I into it, you get them. But I think it's now the upstream people. Whatever the numbering system is, what's eleven gonna say? You know, I run the line from nine to eleven?
Well, that's the whole idea of the process, is you could keep tying into it.
Well. Yeah, but eventually the pipe, the inch and a half or a pipe is not gonna be suspended.
Well, that's from, from the, I was going now, I'm not, I wanted to rock top your problem.
What you're, what you're explaining to is, okay, what you're explaining to is the slippery slope of extending the sewer district. Because at the end of the day, I just want to make sure that we're clear. There's one thing about paying, there's a whole nother thing about the sewer district, because that's the whole, we, right now, the policy is we do not extend the sewer district. It's possible, but with that said, in some cases, there were circumstances where there's septics failing, if that becomes the proof. That's something we'll have to do, which, which requires a study. Because remember, our whole allotment is all based on what we have planned to build. So the minute we add something else, that changes your whole allotment.
You're saying the allocation.
The allocation, I'm sorry, the allocation. So we just really have to look at that, and which would require a little bit more thought than just saying, hey, we're gonna extend it in a couple places. Because every developer would love to come in, or every resident who's on the edge of the sewer district would love to went off to extend that.
How much is, how much is the additional testing that they've requested, that they've asked to install?
We have to wait till the spring.
Yeah.
It's a time.
So it's a time thing, it's not, it's not necessarily a costing, you don't want to wait until.
No, we, we need the state code. She's fear mongering. That's, that's my take on it, so.
What does it have to do with modeling or groundwater, is what they're?
But again.
Yeah, it's a question of trusting where you think.
What would be groundwork, the modeling is.
The rea- the reason we're here, the reason I'm here, that they go, you know, me a dealer here, is that. The town of Bethel's health board is basically stated, stated twice, and this is in the resident, it's been stated multiple times at multiple Zoom meetings, at multiple. Uh, emails that are just go on and on and on, um, that. It's like, you know, it's fear mongering what's gonna go on there, you know? So what happens if somebody, we're giving you, basically, I'm giving the opportunity to the town, right? And I know, you know, there's the allocation issue, and everybody wants to add on, and everybody wishes we do. I'm the first one here. So that maybe I'm setting a precedent, right? I'm footing the bill. I'm bringing in what's needed in the town of Bethel, affordable housing, one bedrooms, okay? Um, but. Our director of health, because I guess they are, because most of us are town residents, is stating that. Septics are failing, they're imminent failure. And the soils aren't suitable, basically, to replace them. Okay? So that's, that's why I'm here. So, I mean, if you guys aren't interested in it, that's fine too. Obviously, we're gonna bring it to court, we'll get it, I'll get what I want eventually, or something to that nature. You know, or we can move forward with this and then do something, you know, and it'll benefit not just Tim Draper. Not just the six people, hopefully, that are local that are gonna live there. But probably another forty houses maybe, or thirty houses that could possibly, you know, some things could fail. This is up to you, this is, that's, that's why we're here. So it's really, the ball's in your court. We're kind of, this is what we can do. The town director, or the health director stated something. Now she stated it, that's on record now. She stated it, so we're, I'm trying to fix that, I'm trying to be proactive. We can be proactive, or, you know what, you know, in five years, it could be reactive, and it could be really.
Here, here, here's the bottom line, it's, it's the, it's the people who aren't here tonight. This afternoon, a septic system failed, I gotta tell you. I don't know what the economic situation is of all the property owners long fucking part, but these are not real high-end properties, they aren't, uh, and. But as Brian was saying, you, you were talking about a twenty-two hundred dollar hit, but a thirty thousand dollar hit to just be able to live in your house. It's tough for a lot of people. And I've seen that, I, I've seen situations where, you know, the health department has to shut down, you know, order to, to, you know. Almost to condemn the property because septic's failed. And the homeowner has to figure out some way to get around it, and it's a lot of money, so. I, I, when Tim came up with the idea, I said originally, I'm not sure the town's gonna want to expand the sewer district for you. But then we said, well, look at Laura's report, and take a hard look at it, and then look at the neighborhood. And then I said, Joe, that's a great idea.
Well, and, and I think, and we can do more questions here at the end, but I think that, like, from our perspective. Appreciate the heads up, we probably have to check with health, do a little studying of that area to see what has actually happened with septic. You know, I haven't had a chance to familiarize myself with the report, but I don't know where that is, the statements are in the report, if it's part of the reason for denial, or if it's. You know, she's talking about soil everywhere, but, you know, we don't really know what's failed in the area. It's the first time anything has come up. I mean, I can, I can say that we can do due diligence and look at it.
I, I'm gonna send her an email tonight or tomorrow morning and ask her, basically, because I just got the check. It was Tuesday night was the meeting, that's hard, right? I just got this yesterday, David sent it to me. And right in there, two places where it's, it's being denied because of health, which is a big reason. So I, I personally, I want to know, because I, I don't.
Yeah.
I, I don't know for a fact, because it was never brought to say that, hey, number eleven button apart failed, or number seventeen, or whatever. That never came out. It was just all this fear mongering. And that's what I'm gonna keep calling it, because that's really what it is.
So you'll, you'll understand why we'll have to actually look into it.
Oh, absolutely.
If it's just what she's talking about in the meeting, or if there are legitimate cases that we should be looking at as an entity.
To before, now, I know you have a question.
Yeah, the reason why, uh. The town sewer was established a long time ago. The, uh, allocation was acquired on small lots out on Stony Hill. Uh, half acre, three quarter acre and less, because they had a lot of systems of repotter, and then what happened with it? The state came out with the, and now that's just the minimum surface area. And a lot of these people that had four bedroom houses were reduced down to two bedrooms. That's when the town got involved and we ran the sewer lines, so these people wouldn't lose their houses. Plus, they'd be able to put garages in whenever they wanted to do. That's, that's what established the sewer district. But you're dealing with the existing town sewer, which was established a long time ago. We're dealing with the minimal surface area out on Stony Hill. They were only three quarter lots, half acre lots. Even when what, the church out there wanted to tie in the sewer, we, no. They weren't allowed to tie in because they got added with property to fix the septic system. So it was established that, on small lots, where anyone's gonna be tied in. You're dealing with the existing sewer in the town. Which had nothing to do with the, with the, the allocation.
With the existing sewer.
Right, there were existing cities, yeah, town sewer. Totally different than what's happening up in Stony Hill.
So does the allocation know that, I, I'm not following yet.
Well, the, so the.
So is there an allocation for Stony Hill and allocation for downtown?
Yeah, yeah. Right now, our allocation, the long-term is around fif- one million five hundred.
The downtown area is.
Long-term.
The, the, the allocation that in our agreement with Danbury.
It's thirteen thirty.
Is one point three, three.
Yeah.
Million gallons a day.
Right.
The build-out analysis for the existing. Sewer service area in the downtown area is one point five million. So there's an obvious deficit.
My understanding, the fudge factor in there, the deficit is because of changes in groundwater and changes in. Like, I know right now we're close to the allocation as we are, with respect to the rain and the sewers and everything that's been going on. We've been hitting one point three, right?
We, we, we've hit it a, a couple of times, so we've hit our limit for that area.
Yeah, right.
That's what I think. That was established when the sewer plant was designed, and we're treating our own sewers, so many, we went to Danbury, everything changed.
Yeah.
That's when the allocation happened, because we couldn't over. Use more sewer in the area, because it cost twice as much money, and that's what caused the problem.
We're, uh. We're talking about allocation, and we had discussed this a couple of years ago when, uh. A former selectman wanted to lend our allocation to Brookfield. And what was, explained to me at that time was, is that we had plenty of allocation left. We actually had access, and that's why we could. You know, give, I forgot what the, the number was, was it one point five million or? Well, they, well, they were, I know you were here for the meeting.
Yeah.
You decided to answer, forget that.
Yeah, they asked for it. I don't think we ever told them we had to give.
Right, they asked for it this year too.
Well, I was at the meeting where I was told we had the allocation, and they were trying to lobby for it. Lou, you were at that meeting as well.
Yeah.
So my question is, is, my question is, is what is the total allocation for the town system?
Two, two million gallons a day.
Two point oh. That's including Stony Hill.
That's our three areas that send two millions.
And you're saying we're currently using between all the areas where we use them?
The build-out allocation.
That's what currently where we use them?
It's been varying, it's been, we've been around a million a day in the downtown area. Since September, we've been like one point two, pushing one point three. So it's not a, it, it's a number that's moving around a bit.
I just want us to be consistent.
Yeah.
I mean, because, you know, there was a, a developer up on Stony Hill who completely changed his plans, and their allocation was changed, if I can, if I recall. It was supposed to be so much commercial, and it was changed to two bedrooms, that was in recent history.
But I want to, I want to get back to the kind of, all these allocations, everything right now is based on our study from two thousand nine. And that's where it basically says, once we build out with all our planning, when we're built out inside our sewer district. We need two million.
I, I understand, I just, like, I'm not saying whether I'm in favor of this project or not, this is still, we kind of opened up a, a different topic that I'm curious about.
Sure.
Because we had discussed it on the project up on Stony Hill. Didn't we have to change the sewer allotment up there, because they went from one bedrooms to two bedrooms? They took away quite a bit of the commercial aspect and added residential, and if I recall, it was. I, I forgot the number, but it was a fairly substantial increase.
I don't recall what their original allocation, are you talking about a, um?
Leesons project, Leesons and Michael's project up there.
Is that one forty-eight? Stony Hill next to Copper Square, or one, or by the hardware store?
It, it, it's the one by Copper Square.
Okay.
It's the one that used to be the old Stony, uh, Hill.
It's because they were gonna, they were gonna do business, they were gonna do mixed use, and they went all residential. Which changed everything from.
Whoa, we still have some. Wait, wait, the, the one you're thinking of, I think, is thirty-six Stony Hill. They had two commercial buildings, they recently went in and wanted to go, they recently wanted to go in with residential, they got denied.
No, but we voted on an aspect of that where they went from one to two, I, I remember it completely, because I said. We're, we're planning a zones, or you approve something and our hands are tied now. It should have come to us first to decide whether we want to do the increase of allotment. I know that for a fact, I mean, I know I'm getting old, but I'm not.
I'm, I'm curious.
Highly, yeah, I mean, I have a fairly decent memory, so. All I'm saying is, we just need to be consistent in these, and start really taking a look, you know? Again, and I'm not saying we're, we're being unfair to Mr. Draper, but. You know, I remember how angry I was at that meeting, because it kind of got shoved down my throat at that point, because planning and zoning, get approved the project. I'm like, well, I can't deny the allotment now, because planning and zoning, you've already approved the project, and I'm opening the town up to liability. In terms of this project, I'm not for it or against it, I think we all need to get more information to really, I mean, I think in fairness, Laura should be allowed to come. And, and talk to us as well, and give us her thoughts on.
And, and, and I'll, and I'll say this, once the commission begins to talk about it, we have to have an honest conversation. About whether or not, I mean, remember, this is different, this isn't consistent about if somebody who's in the sewer district and changing the allotment or building new, this is. This is an expansion, which affects our overall allotment. I think that's the part, if we want to talk to Laura, is we have to see, is there a real need for that area to expand sewer district? It's not about a project, it's not about, yeah, but it's about your point.
Right.
Yeah.
I think if Laura came in and tells us that.
Yeah.
Well, there's a huge problem, so, you know, you should probably do it.
The thing is, is she told me there is.
I understand.
That's the thing, so I hope we're apples and apples.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to hear that, you know, she's telling one commission one thing and another commission the other.
But before you go, before.
Which I'm glad everything's on, too.
Before you go. Whatever, before Mr. Attorney Marcus goes forward with the lawsuit and appeal. I mean, if the commission says we have an open mind but need more time, we're not saying that we want to do it. Or that we don't want to do it, but can we just take our time here? And does that affect your ability to appeal down the road if we decide that we really don't want to do it? Attorney Marcus. You know? Oh, I mean, it, it, one, it saves Mr. Draper money if we don't go to court right away, and it saves the town money if, if we're considering it. You know, but I think we need to hear from all sides before we even really, you know.
Again, if I need to buy time, I can file a complaint and sit on it. I mean, I can beat my statutory requirement, it's not a huge expense to file a complaint, as long as we don't have to spend a lot of time. Again, if you understand the process of the administrative appeal. Filing a complaint is paying a court entry fee and paying a marshal to serve it, and the time to draft it, and that's a thousand dollars all total, the whole thing. Uh, from the town's perspective, the expenditure is to ask the town council to file an appearance, that's virtually nothing in terms of time. But what happens is, at some point, the town has to return the, return the record. Preparing the record is expensive, because it takes some time, so we, if we need to buy some time, I take an appeal. If they have an open mind to this, the appeal can be withdrawn, I mean, before anybody commits a lot of money to it. But the sooner, if I can, if I had, as I said, if I had a, a, a literally a letter saying, we're interested in this. I would use that as a ground, not to appeal, but to amend.
I don't think interest is the word, I think the word is we have an open mind, just want to hear from, I think we need to hear, in fairness, to, to our health director, we need to hear from her and.
Well, and the attorney.
Yeah, and, and Melanie has to look at it.
I have an open mind also.
And I will say this, I mean. That's the one thing we've already, I've already talked to the director about updating that two thousand nine plan. Because that two thousand nine plan, which we're basing everything on, you know, many times has changed because of the type of development. We, we don't really know what the allocations are going to be, so we are looking at that.
And remember, that plan looked at all the undeveloped properties or properties that weren't connected. And they came up with criteria to figure out if they connect, how much flow are they all going to generate? If they were an undeveloped lot, they looked at the zoning, they looked at the size. If there were wetlands, they subtracted.
Was it pre TOD or post TOD?
It would be probably pre TOD.
Yeah, it's two thousand nine.
So but my my point being to study an area takes an engineering effort and it takes time. And you don't just say, yeah, we want to do this. I think you got to really look at the area that could potentially be impacted.
Well, I mean, you could add a thousand units to it right off the bat, right? Isn't that the potential of TOD was designed for?
Nine hundred and forty four.
Nine hundred. I think it was fifty cents.
Well, I mean, I think the real change for us too has been, has been Stony Hill.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that in two thousand nine, they knew the numbers of condos and apartments and everything would be in Stony Hill, so that's real.
All of those numbers then obviously impact the allocation we have with Danbury. You can't just then say, hey, Danbury, we need two point two instead of two point oh.
Yeah.
It's too late because they built their plan based on the allocation that everyone asked for when they started building the plan.
Now, but how far out is this one's a projected time when we'd be at max?
I don't think there's a time.
I don't know that there was a date for that.
When everything's built. Whenever a vacant piece of property is full. So maybe two weeks. That's what it feels like.
I I don't know whether you troubled with this, Tom, or I got this information, but when they did that study in two thousand nine, they took the current then zone. So if it was a single family zone, four bedroom house, lucky the flow being so, so it's weight based on the both of them. These zones at that time. So people have done different types of uses that have increased that flow than that's, you know, um, that's different.
The question too, did we have RT six zoning that even, Route six zone, which is kind of this mixed use?
I'm not sure. We have to go back and just double check. I don't know. I.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, we're just saying it's been fifteen years.
Okay, so I don't know. I think, I think everybody does have an open mind. We're looking, we'll look at studying it, try to figure out the next steps are. And um, I'd like to move along into more questions, comments.
That's all we can ask for.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You got a lot of time. Pete said, forget it. No. Thank you, your chain, my friend.
Actually, is the attorney got a lot of time, probably a few hours.
Okay. So, uh. Actually, Tom, were you ready to talk about irrigation stuff or did you, because I didn't put it on agenda.
Thank you, guys.
I have it on the agenda.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think we were planning anything that today.
I have it, I created it.
You have the actual uh policy?
I do.
Oh, yeah, the irrigation policy?
Yes, let's talk about it. All right, next up, consideration for irrigation policy. I'm going to give you the four, Tom.
Sure.
With this thing up.
And and it's interesting that uh today's newspaper.
Yeah.
Front page has Danbury Limits Water Lawn, Danbury Limits Lawn Watering. They in effect have come up with the same exact policy.
Yes.
And we basically took it from what Aquarian came up with in twenty sixteen when we had a drought. So I and I I don't have all of their full numbers. They they basically touted that it's kind of evened out their flow. It kind of takes. It takes it away from just anybody watering whenever they want, as as opposed to say, everyone decides they want to all water on a certain day. You can now at least spread the load out and it can help in Danbury's case, I think, will help. They have multiple storage tanks, so they could, you know, and as as does Aquarian. For us, we really just have the. The one tank in each zone, but at least if you have an idea that. Half the people are going to water and the other half aren't on these particular days. So I kind of just gave you a little. Um. What's the right word? Just some language up on the first page, talking about some numbers with uh, you know, lawn watering. Um. And then basically the second page breaks it out so that, again, just as Aquarian, Snu down in Norwalk and now Danbury. Uh, which kind of covers a lot of, you know, certainly our part of the state. Even numbers, those are your two days to water. Kind of water it, you know, overnight or in the evening, avoid. You know, ten, ten AM to six PM when you're going to lose more with uh, you have transpiration, wind blowing it off the sidewalks and that kind of thing. Your odd numbers are on are on the other two days. No address. You just lump them in. And then I gave you some bullet points below that to talk about. Um, you know, you can hand water anytime. So people get out there and want to water their bushes or flowers or whatever. That's not using the same kind of demand as the irrigation systems that just come on and run for however long. People don't pay attention really to their heads, not necessarily. They're watering their sidewalk and their driveway at the same time. So ju- just some things for consideration. Um.
So really, the salt sprinkler, oh.
This is an underground, an automatic, or, yeah, basically, or 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 people setting up a sprinkler with a hose, you know, to have the sprinkler running. Again. Do it on your on your correct day and do it, you know, during the better hours of the day when the sun's not going to evaporate it.
These bullet points here are all advice, except for one. One of them is you, it must be equipped. Is that?
On the, with the.
Automatic sprinklers must be equipped.
Yeah, that that's that's state law. So I was putting it in there to kind of remind everybody that that's state law. Your system should have that.
Must have that.
Must have that.
Because again, the others, like I said, are kind of, you know, bullet points, advice.
Yeah, I mean, you can make it part of the policy, certainly. What I didn't add in here, which maybe should be, is.
Yeah.
Oh, somebody planted a new lawn. They can come in, I think the way Aquarian did it, and they'd come in and get an exemption or an exception.
But I but I think to to uh, you know, his point. And to you, the bullet here is still just giving advice. We're saying follow state law. Right? Because we we're not enforcing that necessarily, but we're saying follow state law. It's what it is, right? So I see where you can look at it. It's mandatory, but it's mandatory of the state.
Yeah.
But I think we should enforce it.
Well, then maybe a resident who has a system says, I don't know that I have a rain sensor. Let me, let me get one installed.
But I guess I'm just saying it makes sense to put in here because we're not saying. You know, we're coming after you for that, but yet at some point we'll talk about it, what we're going to enforce it, the whole of the ballgame. There are a lot of questions to answer.
To me, it it does imply that we're going to go after them if they don't comply with the state mandate.
Well, we're going to go after them if they're doing it on a wrong day. When their neighbor calls us and say, hey, Bob next door. Isn't even addressed that he's doing it on the wrong day or are they doing it every day? Yeah, we're going to have to do it and enforce it.
It is very hard to enforce. Aquarian really doesn't have a lot of the authority to enforce it.
Yeah.
You really can't get the local town, like think of Aquarian. They're in all these different towns. The local police departments pretty much are, we're not going to enforce this. You know what I mean? So. You have it on there. You hope maybe a neighbor shames another neighbor into doing the right thing.
Yeah.
If someone's egregiously doing it, I think a water company could then take action. You could, you could send them a letter that you're going to shut their water off. You can probably follow up and shut their water off. If it got to that point where you really meant to do that.
It it's worth reminding everybody right now that it is a misdemeanor to use water to put on your bushes. Your car or your yard. It's a misdemeanor. You're not allowed to do this, municipal water system. We don't enforce it.
You're not allowed to do it what?
We're not, you're, if you are.
If the car's ordinance right now.
If you're on city water, municipal water, you're not allowed to wash your car. You're not allowed to.
What are your lawns?
Water your lawn, water your bushes or any of that. It's a misdemeanor. Now, the point is, it's since nineteen sixty nine.
Right.
amended nineteen seventy something.
Yeah.
Or sixty five, whatever. It's been a long, but we're not, we're going to have to look at that, too.
They kind of left out the wording that said if if a water emergency is enacted, then these are the things.
Right. Well, back then it was a water emergency.
And that's probably why they put it in, exactly. Like in the mid sixty, there was a huge drought. Maybe that's what it came about. I don't know.
Uh, well, I think again, just with this one bullet point, you know, if we said as a reminder.
We can certainly.
You know, again, so it doesn't sound like it's something we're saying you must do. We're reminding you that there is the state ordinance.
Understood.
So you send this out with the water bills?
Well, I I I wanted to obviously see if this is a policy we we want to enact. Um.
Yeah.
Certainly, you 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 publicize things through your newsletter. We have social media. I don't know that I was going to mail this to everybody, but we can have it on our website. Um, I could talk to Paula to see what. Adding another stuffer in with the bill costs us to do.
I I don't think getting the information out is the hard part. That's the easy part.
Yeah.
I think the 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 real question is, number one, Melanie, we are the water utility and we're we're basically doing something contradictory. You're on ordinance. Like what do we, is it, can we, us as a utility, can we just go ahead and put out a water policy? This is what it is. Barely enforce it, just like we do the ordinance and then get rid of the ordinance when we can or update the ordinance.
Modify.
When we can. Because we are looking at redoing a lot of the ordinances right now, but. Um, what do you, you think we're on solid ground putting a policy out?
Because you're, I see what you're saying. It's contradictory if you have an ordinance, as you can't do this period. And then actually you can do certain things on certain days.
Yeah. I certainly, I certainly support the idea of doing this. I think it makes makes a lot of sense. Other places are doing it. We'll get some pushback from our customers.
It's to get, to get you to water wisely as opposed to just, you know.
Tells you how the growth, the longer you water or less.
I mean, I, we haven't, we haven't talked about.
I drove my house together at lunchtime and somebody had their their sprinkler.
I mean, I think before we file this.
Maybe they would do it at six o'clock.
Because if I read that and there's no enforcement, great.
Yeah.
Well, if we come up, because really, let's be honest, how much longer people will be watering the yards for? Really, in August. I think if we're going to do it, we should be thoughtful and come up with what's the penalty if you're caught.
Yeah. What's, what's Danbury's company?
A range of things, you're right.
I didn't, I didn't see, I didn't read their ordinance. I didn't see what they enacted.
We um, I I know we're redoing ordinances and we could certainly add. A a a fine and whatever we've put together an ordinance for finding.
Fine or whatever.
I think the max we can do is a hundred dollars a day.
I mean, maybe I take the word mandatory out of this and maybe now it's.
I mean, yeah, you would hope most people are willingly going to comply.
I think a lot of people will.
You know, I think.
We could do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I said, you know, uh. Rich, Rich just voluntary compliance policy, whatever you want to label it.
Or just call it outdoor irrigation policy. Take off, take off the word mandatory.
And then if we ever find we need to push it next year.
We can put enforcement mechanisms into it. Rich just asked about, it's probably like a lot of the big condos.
Yeah.
So um, at the summit, at the base pump station, you know, we collect data there and we have the master meter there. So just for instance. In May, before they turn irrigation on, they're using up there like twenty nine thousand gallons a day. In June, from June first up to the twentieth, because the twentieth, we kind of. Got them to stop watering for for about a week. Okay. Um, I kind of said, told them we were going to turn them off because we needed a help. Um, with our tank. So we we, anyway, up to the twentieth, they were using out fifty three thousand gallons a day. In that week, we kind of had them off. They were down to thirty six thousand. And then for July, so far, the ten days, they're fifty four thousand. Now, last year is when I started telling them, you don't need to water as much as you're watering. The previous year, they might have been using between seventy and ninety thousand gallons a day. Because I think Toll Brothers had the system coming on daily. Now, they were paying the bill, but Toll was, I think, still in control. So they wanted all the lawns to look pristine while they were selling units. So I started telling Bill, and again, from the research that Aquarian did, you really only need to water like two days a week. A healthy lawn only needs like an inch of water a week. So I started telling the uh, president of the association, Bill.
Yeah.
And he actually has told me he's cut it back now because again, they're trying to save a little bit of money and they cut it back to every other day.
Yeah.
So again, if I can get them to even maybe split it to just the two days, you know, they don't have an odd and an even because they just have large. I would probably look at the usage that they use at each of them and then say, hey, do these two on these two days, do these two on these two days. But there's other condos that again, probably use a larger amount of water.
Their complaint too is that they have sod lawns.
Sod, yeah.
Yeah, that it was never, there's no topsoil and that they burn out these year. So there seems to be a a lot of acceptance in doing this as an advisory.
Absolutely.
So if if we were to to look at this and and just say, Bethel Public Utilities Commission, outdoor irrigation policy.
Yep.
And on the back, we add, as a reminder, all automatic sprinkler systems must be equipped, da 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 da. That would be somewhat acceptable to everybody. So um, I think it would be worth then um, bringing up a motion. That the uh, public utilities authority adopt a policy as stated on June twenty seven, two thousand twenty four. For the uh, outdoor irrigation policy as we read it by the second.
So good.
So with that, is any further questions? Um, I even asked Kelly, are you okay over there, Kelly? You think it's a brilliant idea?
Okay. And what what I could do is um, change the date to as approved by the commission on today's date.
Right, yes.
So I'll do that, too.
So with that, um, I will try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And no objections. Oh, she's serious. Thanks, Eric. Director's report.
Okay, uh, so again, what led me into this, again, was part of that, that one week that we had that really heavy, heavy heat. Um. And if you remember from the last meeting, I mentioned well one A looked to me like it was starting to. The specific capacity number, which is a relationship between the gallons a minute you pull out and the drawdown. Was starting to kind of go down with the wells running at the speeds they were running. So. Um, I had reached out to SB Church. I assumed that they probably weren't going to be able to see me till into July. Which would have given us time to kind of get our backup supplies going. I got a call from Church that they were on on Tuesday, that they were available for next Monday. So the Tuesday, that was the week of the heat. Talked to Danbury. They were, they said earlier in the week, they were okay with giving us an emergency connection to make up the difference in in water that well one A would not be providing us. Um, so I kind of got things going. I needed to talk to the state agencies to get it approved to kind of get Danbury's connection with us. Um, but then by the end of the week, Danbury realized their tanks were losing every day. And uh, they couldn't, and they couldn't guarantee that they'd be able to give me like three hundred plus gallons a minute. So without the guarantee that I said, well, we can't, we can't pull the trigger on taking the well out of service. And then they had that fire on the Sunday morning. So I kind of knew the the writing was on the wall. So we've been. Continuing to work on the backup supplies. We got Chestnut pretty much running, having put it into the system, kind of running it to waste. The uh, the filters are doing pretty good. We still got a couple of other little things to get all the um, the instruments, you know, right and calibrated. Um. I've got uh, another option, which I'm pursuing is well one. Which is in in the wellhouse, okay? When they put in the replacement wells. With the incoming ever source feed, you couldn't run well one and one A concurrently according to that. The amperage really kind of tells you you probably can. But then Danbury said, well, why can't you run well one off a generator? And not have it coming in off of ever source. So I've got a generator. I've got an electrician putting a transfer switch in for us. I want to be able to get well one up and running without having to take well one A offline. I don't want to take well one A offline while we're in the middle of July. So I'll have the electrical ready by tomorrow and I got Church coming on Monday to assist us with, I think we got to repack. We got to repack the well. So I'll be able to get that well bumped and hopefully it gives us two hundred gallons a minute off a generator. That takes all the pressure off wells one A and two A. I won't have to do any redevelopment during the summer. So I'm looking into that option. Chestnut looks pretty good. We should be close to getting that in service if we choose to. If I got well one running, I probably don't want to run Chestnut necessarily.
How many?
There's four, but with two A and two, you can't run them at the same time. With one A and one, you can't run them at the same time. You can only run really two of the wells based on the ever source incoming power. And I'm getting around that by the use of a generator, standby generator. So he's going to give me a transfer switch. We're going to cut into the the breaker and go directly to the to the drive off a generator.
Will you only run the generator during the day or twenty four seven?
I wasn't sure what we were going to do. The way I'm thinking about it now is. If that runs and it gives us whatever it gives us, a hundred and eighty gallons a minute, two hundred gallons a minute, whatever. My thought is run it during the day. When I run it, I take wells one A and two A and I rest them both. End of the day, I turn off well one and I put one A and two A back up to ninety plus percent. And that will allow them to rest and only be doing seventy five percent during the five hours that I run well one. So that's kind of the the thought process.
You know, what about Eureka?
Eureka. Eureka, it, it has more work to do to get that basically running. The, the, the negative about Eureka is the way that's all piped and configured, you don't have a good blow off to run that to waste. When it comes out of the filters, it kinda goes right into the clear well. I gotta, there's a three inch drain on each filter. So I don't wanna put that filtered water till I know, I can sample it and it's clean.
I know, I always thought we had that in reserve.
We had, we had it in reserve, I think, years past, they probably kept it up and ready and, you know. Able to be put into service, in, in the last few years, it's, it's not been kept up.
See, I was understanding that we were running it every day.
No, it had, it hasn't been putting water into the system because we've been running the wells, one A and two A. We got the redevelopment wells in seventeen and, and they've been carrying a load and they've been doing fine. And when we needed to, to redevelop one of the wells, we had Eureka at the ready.
So to get Eureka out running, we gotta purge the system out more?
Well, we, we ran it the other day, okay, we had trouble with, there was a pressure switch. And, and again, all the valves are air operated, right? So if you don't have air pressure, then the valve's not gonna operate, open or closed. There was a pressure sensor switch and of course, the way the plans are written up, it was a package plant from whoever the vendor was. All the airlines by others, so, so there wasn't a good set of plans on all the airlines. But we, we troubleshoot it or troubleshooted it and got it down to that pressure switch, which we replaced. So we, we got the plant, we got the roll water valve, everything was running through the plant. What we didn't wanna do was have the float come up in the filter. To the point then where it would open the valves and put it into the clear well. So we ran it, we kinda tested it out, but we haven't run it long enough to really. Put all the chemicals through it, blow it to waste, get samples of it and make sure it's clean.
Well, what about the, the Chestnut too? I mean, uh, we haven't used that plant.
We haven't, but we have a different scenario there, when we put in the Chestnut tank. Okay, South Street Pump Station runs up the line and it used to run, it was connected to the clear well at the plant.
Right.
We tapped into the line and ran it over to the tank. When we did that, we put in a shut off valve and a blow off. Which enables me to run the plant down to that closed valve and then run it to waste.
Right, okay.
So I have the ability at Chestnut to basically run that plant, put it through its bases, make sure the turbidity is good, the chlorine's good. The bacteria is good before I put it into the system. That's probably the biggest difference between Chestnut and Eureka.
Do we think it'd be beneficial to get the thing going?
Which? Chestnut?
Yeah.
I, we have it going, the wells are still doing fine right now.
I understand.
It's not like, I gotta do it today.
Yeah.
Uh, we're getting to that point and it looks like, well, probably what I'm gonna do, and again, we're, I'm talking with Justin, who's our chief operator. We wanna run it overnight to waste, one night, to make sure that, okay, when we backwash it. Okay, it's gonna go twenty-four hours for us. And in the years past, they always backwash that, those filters once a day. So you backwatched it in the morning and those filters stayed clean all day long. But I, I'd wanna, again, prove that out.
Yeah, I, we did have the conversation though, for the future, that we should have some sort of inspection schedule. To see that they're ready to go as a backup.
Oh, yeah, no, no doubt.
We, we.
Things got a little way from us.
I was.
I don't know. No, we were always under the assumption it was ready to go.
But I also think with Bergstrom like now, it's not here yet, with Bergstrom coming in this close. And we knew we're gonna phase out Chestnut, we're gonna phase out Eureka. So I think all of that and with the time, you know, to keep it up, we were down a guy for the last year. Because when Ed retired, we really didn't replace Ed until Justin got certified.
Tried to pay off when we put our money into the wells, figured that was gonna be the cure off.
Yep.
And, and it's not secure. So we have, right, we have to have a backup.
We do, understood. And I've got Chestnut at the ready, I mean Chestnut should be able to be put in service next week if it needed to be. And we're, we're not at that point. The whole thing that got me started was looking at our numbers in May and I said, well, wait a sec now, what, you know. Is this well gonna make it through to, to September? I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm saying we gotta get ready in case not.
Well, we're, we haven't had a major fire, thank God.
Yeah.
No, and one day even, even when we were talking about wanting to water, we're trying to remind the fire departments that, got ponds where they could. No, we were running tankers, we're running a tanker, every time, we're running a tanker. Yep. And we were drafting from, from the park and. Yeah. We're kinda, you know, anyway, but.
And, and as it is, we're, we're running wells one A and two A, we're, we're kinda man, manually intervening, we're not just letting it go, then go automatic. So we're, we're kinda adjusting them throughout the day. When the tank gets full, we're, we're, we're resting them and then by the end of the day, we're turning it back on and then we're checking it after hours as well. So we're, we're managing them and I think we're good, but I, I wanna get well one looked at, I wanna get Chestnut ready.
Don't have a problem, but what do we have to do for Eureka to get, to fix that?
Again, our, our manpower is kinda focusing on that and, and, and kinda keeping all of our other system going, I'm gonna not. Forget about Eureka, I, but I don't have a real good way to just shut off, go into the clear well and blow off a lot of water. So I can run it and run it and run it, you know what I mean?
Well, that's look at that.
Well, when that float comes up, those valves open, that's just the way it works. So I can run it for a little bit, blow it to waste, backwash it, that, that's kinda what they do, is they backwash and backwash, dump it, backwash, get it, get it conditioned. And get it ready, and when then, when we get closer, I'll use that three inch blow off to basically collect samples and then see where we're at with it. So I'm not gonna ignore.
So I think, I think the point is, those guys have been working the butt off and, and, no, no, I'm not, you're right. But I think what, what you're saying is we'll, we'll focus on the other two.
Because one of those other two.
We do, we will get Eureka up.
One of those other two are gonna take the pressure off wells one A and two A.
But we, but we will, we do, we will have to get Eureka eventually.
Yeah.
And have it as a backup, but, um, you know, it's, it's something we just have to kinda keep on and have a, maybe this plan or.
Oh, you know.
Inspection schedule. Well, Danbury's heard for war to begin with, and they were talking about tying into Kenosha. Well, you know, what's interesting is this is what, this is what pointed out to Danbury, they had a problem. When we called them and asked for water. They were talking years ago, tying into Kenosha. When they had that fire, fire up there, they could've drafted right out of Kenosha, it's only fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah, but that's.
They could've ran two five inch lines out.
But they need health department approval to utilize that source.
Oh, no, well, that's, well, that's what the fire that was down there.
Yeah. They could, no.
Yeah. So, cause, cause Danbury would love to use Candlewood Lake too, but.
Yeah, so.
They can't have, they can't have, it's a pass.
What I'll ask, so we can, so we can move on, what I'll ask is, Tom, will you please include this on your director's report for the next few meetings?
Just.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll let you know where we're at.
The groundwater.
Yeah.
And what we're coming up with, yeah, but we wanna stand for.
Absolutely.
Okay, and, um, and to the point of those guys did do a lot of work, we have to do something for them, so. Maybe if we get together and do a, I don't know, pizza day or something, we'll advise you a few to clear off.
What we want to do is recognize him at some point.
We're gonna puggle.
And, and I can tell you, I got good comments from, um, our new op, about our new operator, he's been integrating well. Uh, he asks questions, he listens, he, he picks it up when you tell him, so.
Excellent.
I, I, I think we got another good operator on our hands as well, so that's good.
Awesome.
Um, my, my only other item is on the sewer side, um, I had budgeted. So that we can get ordered a replacement pump for Paul Street, again, so that we're ready. Um, I have the budget number from, uh, Kovacs. What I'm, what I intend to do, if, with approval, is go ahead, reach back out to Kovacs and have them order that pump for us. I, I think it's, uh, I don't know if she put the lead time on here, twenty to twenty-four weeks, I think, from approval. So when she gives me a number, when Wanda gives a number, it's, and it's a budget number, she's usually overestimating a little bit. So that if it becomes a bid, then our budget number's not out there in, in, in the public. So she's usually under what she budgeted for, so I got a hundred and five thousand that I put in the budget for it. So I'd like to just go ahead, we've used Kovacs for everything we've done down in Paul Street, they replaced the last pump, they, they do our bypasses down there. Where Kelly and I are both very comfortable with, with them, as opposed to bringing in someone else who we don't really know the quality of what we're gonna get.
Is that the smorgasbord pump that we went to look at?
No, no, um, I, no, this is, I, I don't wanna wait, I wanna get, I wanna get another pump so that we're at the ready. That flight pump, I know those pumps are way expensive as it is. And, um, I, I never got any better numbers back from them, it'll be some modifications to the piping, the whole thing is gonna be. Definitely more money than this and the way it's working now, I, I don't think the guys are spending a whole tremendous amount of time. With, with the muffin monster and, and the screen that we put in.
Just daily they go in.
Yeah, they, they clean it daily, so it's never gotten to the point where it's, oh my God, the pump is totally caked up and they can't get at it.
When we do our quarterly cleaning, some time to the pumps, well, but they're, they're prepared to take them pumps apart as soon as there's issue with it. But when we do the quarterly cleaning on Paul Street, it stir, it stirs everything up, that's why we have problems with the pump.
And, and as far as the pumps, we replaced one in like twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
Did we replace either of the other two while you've been here?
Um, I think we rebuilt one when I first came here.
Okay, so. Oh, five or oh seven, somewhere in there, so then the third, the third one's older still?
Yeah.
It's time.
But we also rotated once a week.
Yeah.
Rotating through, um, we had one check, uh, fail, so we actually, one of the guys was able to rebuild that one. Kid, so that was one check about that.
So this is my understanding that if we're approving this, we'll probably take a vote or is this?
Well, it's an item in the budget, so we've approved the budget, it was identified as a project, so.
Right.
I don't know that you have to take a motion, I just wanted to communicate.
I mean, for the question.
I think we should go a hundred thousand dollar item.
We could, I mean, it's, but your point, it wasn't the budget for that item.
I put in, I put in a hundred and five, I, I will now go back to Wanda and ask her for a firm call. So if you give me a not to exceed one oh five, I'm, I'm anticipating her vote to be something less.
Okay, but it's weird that we're voting on something starting in the budget, but I'm.
Yeah, nothing.
Yeah, if you'd like, if you, if you'd like to make that motion, we, we can do that.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the, um, new replacement pump for Paul Street. And not to exceed a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Second. Any further discussion on giving pump? See none, of your minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any votes? Oh, she cares. Anything else in the director's report?
Uh, no.
Okay, whole business, um, I move that we table the consideration and acceptance from this remain related easement at, uh, Steiner and Benetford. Any discussion on that, see none, all in favor, aye. Motion carries. Do you see capital project status summary?
Okay, uh, for, for Bergstrom, uh, let's see, what they just completed in the last month. The filter vessels have been placed in the filter room, the CMU walls, uh, the interior door frames. Additional metal building components have been delivered, um. We've capped and abandoned the, the, the couple of monitoring wells that were around the permanent well. And I guess we paid for some data software and hardware materials. Um, they're probably, I, I didn't jot those numbers down, uh, they were. They're probably up to like maybe sixty percent of, of the, of the dollars for the project spent to date. And construction schedule wise, but I, I don't have this month, it was sixty-six percent last month, it's probably a little bit more than that obviously. Um, upcoming, we're waiting for the, uh, I guess the metal building to start to get erected. That should be coming up soon, I think they're gonna pressure test the sewer line. Uh, we're gonna have a hold off on flushing and pressure testing the water main. For a little bit here till I know if I got a secondary source at the ready. So that's Bergstrom, um, I think the, uh. The sanitary sewer evaluation for sub area thirteen. Um, I'm waiting on Creek Mountain, again, they had to do the heavy cleaning, which we've approved, I'm waiting that for that to be scheduled.
Okay. You know, that's gonna happen in what area next, what part thirteen? I wanna, I wanna get it out in the newsletter.
Uh, well, it'd be the swampy areas, so it was, uh, it's behind, um.
Uh, from, yeah, from, from Diamond going to the plant, plant way back up to, uh.
You're calling off South Street or? South Street going through Parloa and where it comes out on the beach.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be done next week?
No.
When they, what, so when they're doing it?
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta reach back out to, to Bob, he told me he's still waiting on him for, for scheduling.
Okay.
I think this time of year is probably good, cause I think the groundwater might be lower, they may have an easier time getting in there, but.
What time is it, the rain? Saturday. Uh. The, the line that's, um, from Beach Street to Diamond, um. Does that be aligned or is anything being lined this time or?
Well, when they finish this and they get all the reports, then they'll look at.
Some of the cleaning.
Correct, the next step that I budgeted for, uh, like a design, uh, project for them. To then basically tell us what sections and put some plants and specs together and I'll again, focus on what needs to be lined.
That, that main was very deep and it was very wet, they had to put low points in to get the lines in.
Okay.
Around there.
Yeah.
And it was, uh, clay tile because the hatch factories were still in operation back then, they did that, so. We might be lining some of that.
All right, well, they, they have the specs, they have the camera work and, uh, the product will be whatever needs to be lined and then those swampy man, swamp manholes will have to get raised. I don't know how yet, but my hands perhaps, we'll see.
But that'll, that'll be killing.
All right, that, that was it for Cal.
How about PFAC city class action updates?
PFAC, they just extended, I mean, I, I submitted our stuff, so, um, we're, our cleaning form has been submitted for oh three M and June five. The deadline was gonna be, I think, tomorrow and I just got an announcement that he extended it to the twenty-sixth. So I, when I click back on ours, it, it was, you know, it, it said, uh, submitted for a while, now it says in review. So, uh, somebody's looking at it, I suppose.
Okay, first mate, uh, you totally summarized the report.
Uh, we had a few things over the past month, sewer wise, uh, we had a sewer blockage behind Target. Uh, that line that was put in, part of Target was built, uh, I got a call on it, took it away to chase it a little bit, but we got that opened up. Uh, that was really the only issue with the, uh, distribution area there. Uh, pump trees, last night we had one of the quads where, where the pump goes down the rails. And there's two quads that attached to the piping in there, one of them fractured, so the pump came off. And it was just, it was just stirring the liquid inside the, uh, well, well. So we switched back to another pump, the other pump, got that all taken care of. Um, like the equipment came out this morning about nine o'clock, they, they brought a call with them, they were able to repair that one. And we had a problem with the noise with the new pump in, uh, pump trees. So, uh, we've, we've had it all out there a couple times, they wanted to see pressures, but we had it tapped. We found out what the pressures were, they said it was a little bit of hydraulic issue there, so they, um. So actually I had to go pick it up in the insomnia today, they've got a new impeller, impeller and balloon, put it on. Now it's as quiet as it can be, um, six hundred seventy-five gallons per minute at, uh, seventy pounds pressure. So in a nutshell, that's real good and like I say, it's quiet. So now the, the new pump that we have coming in for the other side, we're gonna have them adapt it also with this balloon. And, uh, it's, it's actually a smaller balloon, but it's a high efficiency pump. So we'll be in good shape there and it'll also give us a spare one, a spare one that we'll have right at the, at the shop. Or right at the, the, the plant, so we're in a good shape at, at, uh. We're a little bit nervous this morning, eight to five, thinking maybe we gotta get a bypass pump, but once we put it all together, we're, we're in good shape. But I, when I came today, this morning, I mean, this, this afternoon, everything was just bugged up, so we're thinking of that. Uh, we, we had a miss mark on, uh, sixty-one reservoir, the job that, uh. Right here by Saxon Wood was a miss mark, well, it actually worked out in our favor because it was a lead whip. So we actually get kind of lead whip out of the system without it, it leaking, uh, why we were, why they were trying to do the tap to new houses. But that, that got all screened out, we also had a service leak at, uh, twelve Saxon Woods. Uh, it was on the customer's side and we thought it was under their foundation, but, uh, Penbrook came and helped follow it. Did a reasonable job for the, for the gentleman, very appreciative of what the guys did. Uh, sixty-two point two, we have a service leak and then of course, uh, fourth of July, we had the main break on, uh, Corner Shore and Midway. That was a, uh, twelve and a half foot running grate on the eight inch tran. That was a uh, twelve and a half foot running grate on the eight inch transside line. Uh, kind of opened up that whole intersection right there. Uh, I had uh, take her out. They made the repair, but they went from coupling the coupling, dropped in all these pieces, right? Put, put new couplings on it and yesterday they've they've paved it. Now, after talking to Bobby, we're kind of not, because of the hot weather, we want to let the roads settle a little bit. And then we probably ended up filling that whole intersection there, the south and uh, midway. But it's it's all tight now. Uh, we ended up doing the twelve inch main over on the Elgin, where it dropped down to six and it backed up to eight. Uh, that was uh. I described what was found in the ground there, but it was a lot of work. Uh, but we've got the twelve inch out of Elgin because Bob's funded on renewed. And we've got a little better control on things, so something should happen in there with the, we had to install the valve. Uh, the new guys started on the twenty-eighth. Um, very mechanically inclined, wants to, like, like Tom said, watch him earn, uh, ask a lot of questions. Got to tell you, we really have the. Got a uh. Ninety percent good crew, uh, and it and it 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 shows. I mean, these guys care. I mean, you were saying about pizza. These guys, they were, they're working three, four hours every night just to making sure the tanks and the wells are proper. You know, on top of their their regular uh, eight hour day, so they're they're really uh, we're we're in a real good place.
Was it, was the name of the guy? Was that, what's the new guy's name?
Uh, Deluka, Chris Deluka. He's, he's got some uh, frag, uh, fracking wells and uh, well background, military, real, real sharp guy, real sharp guy. Uh, now any MIUs, I am down to a hundred and thirty-five MIUs here in the village. Twenty-four pits that need to be done, which the majority of them are right on uh, that page. Uh, and there's sixteen well ones out in Stony Hills, so there's a hundred and seventy-five of them. The appointments are dropping off. We've got to probably send out letters again and to the door tax, we have to really fuck with the door tax. Uh, we've really only dropped by uh, I think ten from last uh, from last one. But on the other hand, we've been doing a lot of uh, uh, high usage companies. So we're. We're getting there. And last but not least, our memorial hydrant overrun uh. Well, well, by the art, the glass company, the parts finally came in yesterday after the two, two months. But the parts did come in and I hope in that next week, I get it there, we'll, we'll take it apart. I hope we don't have to dig up and replace it.
Just as you remember, if we replace it. It's coming to town.
Right there. But other than that, but we had a busy month and like I say, the guys have been doing a great job.
How how is the rest of our hydrant program?
Uh, you know what, my one that I had out of service right by the old P D. That one I got it get out, I can't get it open, it's frozen shut. Uh, but I I, you know, I haven't done any more of it. There, there, there's still two or three there, obviously.
The the one on Hickcock, you started abandoning that one.
At some point we are, yeah. I'm I'm afraid of that, getting there, but.
Uh, I, let's just get a crap box, you know?
Yeah.
Hate to see it sign on an out of order.
No, that one, that one I'm afraid of, afraid of what's there.
But if you have another position, you know, in those matrix.
I was, I was just saying twenty-two.
I'll, I'll take it, I'll take the comments.
Anything else, Kelly?
No.
All right, with that, I think we're done. Great job. I know that you do, I know you guys are super busy upfield. Great job. Uh, with that, I accept the motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, adjourn at five oh four P M.
Thank you.